Everybody doing okay?
They left the college stuff for.
Oh, that's.
It's in the next time.
Absolutely.
In your spare time.
What is this?
I made, oh, that, uh, passed out to us from Catherine Cross. I made the announcement about the restroom. That's you before call.
See? Oh, yeah, okay, yeah, happy.
I have a few, a lot of people.
Did you get your acting out?
I did.
Good, good, good.
No, a dear, a dear friend, uh, I just found out it's in the hospital in Corpus Christi. So I need to make sure that I do everything I can to ensure that he lives.
And maybe put this little group this time.
Yeah, hope R D S can speak up. Just one more minute, we'll get started, everybody. Thank you for being here today. My name is George Moore, I'm the B County Judge. Um. Think I have more documents than I came in with. Not really exactly sure where they all go. Oh, okay.
Me.
Not yet. Half a second. Okay.
Are you waiting on me to give you that John's?
Not yet, I'm.
Oh, yeah, John, no, John's here, he can do that, whatever.
Okay. That is a lot of information. Mr. Hartman, when you're ready. Commissioner Lenny, are you ready?
I'm ready.
Okay. We're all ready, then I will go ahead and call this, uh, special called meeting, the B County Commissioners Court to Order. The time is six oh seven, the date is Thursday, August nineteenth, twenty twenty-one. We are physically located in the B County Courthouse District Courtroom, number two oh one, one oh five West Corpus Christi Street, Beeville, Texas, seven eight one oh two. That was the call to order. Before we proceed, uh, with the, uh, the reason why everybody's here tonight, I'd like to take a moment and go through, uh, a little bit of information with y'all. I know there's, uh, a lot of interest to hear everything that's going to happen tonight and, um, and I appreciate the interest in the community. Can everybody hear me okay? Little louder? How about this? Can you hear me now? All right. Um, when I stop thinking so much about what I'm saying, uh, I'll speak louder, but when I think about what I'm saying, my voice trails off. So, um, first of all, Commissioner DeWitt, uh, suggested, and I think it's wise, uh, to let everybody in the, uh, everybody out there know today that if for any reason during tonight's proceedings, if you need to use the restroom, we have restrooms located on the second floor. When you exit the courthouse, if you just go right back here, uh, the ladies restroom is all the way at the end of the hallway, the men's restroom is just past the stairwell, so you don't have to go back down to the first floor. Secondly, uh, if the meeting is going, uh, longer than you're able to, uh, sit around for and you need to get up, that's fine. I would only ask that out of, uh, respect for everybody that's here tonight, that you do so in a quiet and in as least a disruptive manner as possible. Uh, and you can go ahead and, and exit out, walk around, uh, get the blood flowing back through your legs, and then you can, again, quietly and respectfully, please, uh, come back in, uh, should the spirit move you. Um, the order of proceedings this evening, well, I can get to that in a second. Let me get to this conduct of everybody at the meeting tonight. Okay, a couple of things, just some ground rules. We're all gonna play nice tonight, uh, but I know that there are many of us that are here tonight, uh, that are very, uh, passionate and have very strong opinions and feelings regarding this issue. And I appreciate that. I speak on behalf of all, uh, the Commissioners, court staff, and employees that are present here after hours, that we appreciate this good turnout. Thank you for being here, thank you for being interested, and thank you for caring about your county and how, uh, how elections are conducted here. But, that being said, commenting without first obtaining the permission of the chair, that is I, will prevent the orderly proceeding of this meeting. I just printed this, I wrote this out so that I could say it nice and succinctly for everybody. This is not a town hall. This is not an open conversation or a discussion. This is a Commissioners Court hearing. Y'all are members of the public, and I'm glad that you're here, but if, if I don't, uh, if I don't acknowledge you, I don't want to hear from you. And if you do have an excited utterance or, uh, uh, comment, or otherwise make some distracting or, uh, or other type of, uh, noise, or sound, or movement, you will be disrupting the order of this, uh, of this proceeding. I will take that very seriously, please don't do that. Um, respect, uh, uh, everybody else that's interested, uh, and make sure that you're not distracting from the information that we're all hearing specifically and, and, uh, and primarily, you don't want to distract the Commissioners from taking in all of this information because it ultimately is going to be us who decide, uh, to take action, to not take action, to, uh, take further action at some point in time in the future, so on and so forth. I'm preaching to the choir, you know, uh, how these things go. So, once again, on behalf of the Commissioners and all presenters this evening, I'm going to thank you in advance for your decorum and respect for the formal nature of this event. Moving on, agenda item number, or discuss and consider action on the following items. Agenda item number two, presentation, discussion, and possible action concerning the method of conducting elections in B County, Texas. We will have an order of proceedings this evening. I'm going to announce the order of proceedings this evening so that everybody knows how this proceeding is going to occur this evening. First, we're going to hear from B County Election Administrator Laura Warnix. Second, we are going to hear from our party chairs, uh, should they wish to make a presence station to the court. I know that we have one party chair present, uh, tonight, I do not know if, uh, both party chairs are present or not. Third, we are going to hear from Hart Inner Civic. I hope I said the company name correctly, and if I didn't, my sincere apologies. And finally, and I don't have a formal name, uh, for this group, uh, but I will call them Mr. Brown's Group. Um, this is the group of concerned citizens that raised this issue initially to Commissioners Court through public comment at three prior Commissioners Court meetings. This is the first opportunity that this group has had to, uh, engage directly with the court in a manner in which the court can receive this information under a specific agenda item where there is the potential opportunity for action. That is very important. Um, and that is why I think it is very important Mr. Brown's Group have an opportunity to address the court directly, uh, in this, uh, uh, in this, uh, uh, meeting. Um, uh, there may be, uh, one or more individuals from Mr. Brown's Group that, uh, will address the court. Um, I've left that to the sound discretion of that, uh, collection of, uh, uh, of concerned citizens. They will be followed up by Ms. Laura Presley, who is, is here, uh, on behalf of the group, who will also address Commissioners Court. Um, before we, uh, get started, Commissioners, are there any, is there any, uh, additional information or anything that y'all would like to add at this time?
I deserve the right to do it later, sir.
Yes, sir, everybody can have that right. We, I want this to be as much of an open discussion as possible, so. Wonderful. Then, um, i- in that case, Ms. Warnix, you have the floor.
Thank you, gentlemen, Commissioners. I would say that elections here is a top priority for B County election office. In two thousand seventeen, when I was twenty, I was elected to the legislature, actually, the oath, to faithfully execute the duties of my office and to defend the Constitution of the United States. That is a duty that I take very seriously. My purpose today here is not to make sure that our, or to protect the integrity of B County, but instead, I want to ensure each and every brother that security has been and always will be, as top priority for my office. I respect that request, and you just live in the information tonight with a unbroken, open mind. I would like to address concerns about third, very, very common, serious, which is the court. First, I'd like to address the, as the question considered, whether it takes about. Since I take office, the initial experience of office has been constantly been displaced. To assure voters that they are going to have a way to record. This year, legislation has consistently addressed the issues of paper ballot and has cast legislation that will require paper ballot. In order to confirm election results, such in one twenty-seven point three, real decisions in Texas election post, we just want to admit everything I'm doing in my office that Texas election does. Require a risk, lending audit to be performed within twenty-four hours after all of those votes have been counted. Now, countrywide, after the day of elections, we have states that we have a vote coming in, preventing ballots that we, uh, prove and, and, uh, those kinds of things. We have layoffs from, uh, that are acceptable from militaries, those kinds of things. But the ones we require us to do, we make sure they're all used. In order to confirm election results, we, you know, we want to, this is not a digital that, that, that we're doing here, they're just putting judicial guidelines. We've been doing partial manual counts to verify accuracy all along. So, I mean, we can count the ratings and reasons that are randomly selected and signed by the Secretary of State. They choose which reason, they choose to attract, and they send us variety of those, and we have to hand count those, and make sure they match what we've reported. Can you count paper ballots? When there's, while there's nothing in our system, because we can't go back and make a count of ballots, but I would like for you to understand why we're talking about this. Did you, did you know that we've been running that common tabulation in B County since two thousand and this? That since two thousand and fifteen, we've never thought the various, uh, due to the hard, A C S. Back when we did do the county ballot, the main elections that were ahead of other counties were the primary and the November elections. We now, after all the tests we did in the county, hold elections, we can't resolve on longer ballots and without a thought. The Commissioners Court, they only have the authority to designate ballot type in November, now, the constitutional limits and the special model elections in county law. They have no control of the entity, they have no control of the primary. Those are stuff that other individuals that get to choose what not to file. Back when we did that, there were three reasons that came up, the reason we did not set everything county paper ballot. The most, one of the most obvious is it's extremely time consuming. If you can imagine an election, judge, that they're working hours that way, and then you're expected to say, you cannot leave, once you start counting ballots, they'll do that, and then they'll go to the all-hands. So, that can go on for days, in B County, or making elections of every day. So, that's one thing. Research, our academic research has shown there can be a two percent error rate in county ballot. I don't know too, but I want everybody to vote for the county. That's what my job is, is to ensure that everybody is voting, that they're voting for the county in kind of correct. Some of the reasons people get tired, so they may start marketing, they kind of want their mind, the judges, the judges calling out the business, they may not hurt, or be on market, but not on that, any more of them in. Those are, those people on the count. They just make mistakes, they just don't overlook it. They don't agree on what policy to mark. What does it say they know this is voting, does it say they know this is not, or the, the French or count? It opens the door for, for all of the others' main considerations, because, uh, paper ballots were not really allowed.
... Trust warning and transparency. For secrets that could be anything from the Chinese poll workers to the Chinese companies.
Ms. Warnix. Ms. Warnix, would you speak a little bit more into the microphone, please?
Can you hear me?
Well, it's the online, online.
Maybe we can turn your podium a little.
Yeah, or you could turn the lecture and it's on wheels. Yeah.
China is a process that reveals, revolves around legislation and law enforcement. For secrets that only keep us compliant with state codes, it offers an opportunity to strengthen our integrity and our transparency. Election security for our elected citizens is settled in state laws. Election codes can rule the banned and processed standards for those who must meet and say they must meet in order to be first out for getting that. And I, our election participants, by their history, have some unique information on that, and I hope to listen to the podium. The United States Election Assistance Commission oversees several cybersecurity requirements in testing processes. They do not let go out of the company's limits. They have to meet strict and strict guidelines as to what will be asked. It has to be approved the whole week and every good day. In 2019, we had an office to be prosecuted and security has been audited by the Cyber Department. They went to our inherent systems, the equipment we use, how our procedures work. They know everything, and they made some adjustments. This is how we can bring this, this is how we can be more transparent. Something else that we could implement is if we had a warning system, Charles. We had a security camera that then covered in the entire equipped storage room. We've enrolled a multiple security program that is MI class and BI class to begin access to election services via the system, such as pinpoint detection. And we'll be checking all of its authentication through our desktop computers, voting, calculating secrets, and our own health. Our entire staff will lead annual fiber security trends not only through the Secretary of State, but through the Treasury Association of Representatives. We put in place management policies based on the Secretary of State's election security best practice. So we've gone a long step up to even ensure the more security around. In 2020, the Secretary of State office established a tech collaboration program that provides very insightful information. That's why I tell you my financials. I did have a handout over there, but we did not get one. It is available on the Secretary of State website.
Don't forget that microphone.
What is that? That, that better?
I think so, I don't know. Slow down, slow down a little bit, yeah.
In 2014, he thinks that if they do this legislative, there was a legislature reporting that there is no evidence that any voting or voter registration system in Texas were compromised before the 2015 elections or any subsequent elections. The Secretary of State of Texas, the law, say that no voting system can ever be connected to the internet at any point. And you're going over the accounts and within every account. All of the software certified by the Secretary of State to be loaded on a system used for counties or party voting codes. We don't want anything out of the limits, we have to go through and review. Before and after each day, all these systems are marked with numbers sealed that have their unique serial lines. Election codes are trained and vetted through this to ensure that there is no tampering or damage to these programs. All of our voting systems are tested three times, twice at some of the machines they're using in elections and once immediately after. The very first test is open to the public, and that helps that that is published in the paper. Election judges confirm that their review of ballots at the opening of votes, at the end of voting procedures required audit, to make sure the number of votes passed, four times, which is the number of voters that gets checked in. Election judges, election judges have that audit that are required for anyone that is that personnel is there to serve all of these. So, and I tell all of the elections, that was the part of that that was required for all elections, and they trust we've been doing those all along. The Secretary of State Director of Legislative Report, President of his office, was an author of any successful fiber attack on any of the four categories in the election and discussion. Those categories include voting participants, including voter registration, data, candidate standing, election night reporting, and behavior systems, main channel, main channel of the Secretary of State, the public safety websites of the Secretary of State and the county websites. None of those have ever been compromised. The SEC does not get accomplished without the testing of voting systems. I've got a hard question about our individual here, who's playing our layer design, engineer, and many factors. During this discussion, please listen to these factors. Voting devices are work like these operating P O S. Throughout the entire operation, all various institutions from home to maintain complete audit logs, every key cell is recorded, including user authentication, data issues, user interaction, those authentication, and the business. Two factors authentication require to ensure access to bill collections is limited to all of our personnel. The visitors should trust Lucy that for any gain on our press program, application codes, are running on any voting system device or work system. Mr. Gallois will give you a better recommendation of that trust listing when he says his credit statement. No hard system is ever, in any way, connected to the Internet of the following: the Internet or internet, voter registration, voter personal data, other time election office application, or emails. Experimcar, Drive, and other devices cannot be certified for voter voting device. Security includes ELO, temporary seals, non-standard ports that fit only heart or prostate cables and devices, and prevent inaccessions of any standards from running off the shelf papers. Non-standard electrical wiring is in the strategic area. Thank you, Commissioner, thank you, Judge.
Thanks, Ms. Warnix. We may have some questions for you, so don't go anywhere.
Okay.
Commissioners, do we have any questions?
No, that was quite enlightening.
Quite informative, that was very informative.
Excellent, thank you all. I do have, no, I have questions for you.
Oh, okay.
You will, okay. Just a couple of quick questions. I think you answered this, but could you just restate it for me? That you do, and go into a little bit more detail. We have a couple of components of the electronic voting, or any voting process. We have vote by mail, ballot voting, which is on paper, and then we have early voting, and we have election day voting. With respect to early day and election day voting, you answered that you do reconcile, I believe it's called the log book, or the voter log, where there's two separate systems. There's the system, when I go in to vote, I go to the first system, and they confirm who I am, they identify it, and they enter it into a little computer.
That's voter list, yeah. And what would be helping?
And that voter list is connected to the Internet for purposes of communicating with the other voter logbooks, electronic logbooks, in our other polling places.
That is correct.
And do we, do we do any type of, has it been the practice of B County in elections past to do a daily audit, or, what's the word I'm looking for, reconciliation of the logbook to the number of votes that the machine?
Every time, every number of them.
Okay. Have we ever had any type of inconsistency with respect to that?
No.
If we did, that would be a big issue for you, would it not?
It would.
Um, can we do that, on early voting? Do we do that on early voting?
We do it every time, every time. We have separate logs that we fill out every night. If there is a discrepancy, there better be a way. We have to pull about it because somebody has messed up, saying they want to drop our, or they walk away, you know, call clean, so that we cannot have to sell those ballots as we boil. They all leave the process, and we watch them very carefully to try to eliminate those.
And then, and again, I know some of these questions may be more easily answered by the representative from Heart and Civic, but I believe that your expertise and knowledge in these, in these devices makes you a perfectly proper person to answer this. When I go in and I log into the, and I register with the logbook, and then I, they print out a little, a little, thank you, and it has a number on it. And then I go to any voting machine, and I enter that, that number into the machine, correct?
Your register, yes. Why don't you get your check in slip, do a check in slip, it's a voter registration sample?
Okay.
You have your name and your precinct number on it, and scan your ballot box by code. You take that to a judge, and they scan that ticket, so that's going to give you your correct ballot. That gives you the little number that you go to any machine, and the other machine takes your ballot.
Okay. And that's separate from the logbook and separate from the machine?
That is correct, there is no connection together.
Are they reconciled altogether, or how does that work?
They are hand reconciled, and by the time you take your report off your machine, you get your total number of votes, you go to your logbook, you put in the name you have in the whole checkbook, and they go to match.
And we, and we do that in early voting, not just on election day. On election day, when, when the polls close, and the data is, I guess, the machines, are they brought back to your central counting facility, or, or is the data downloaded off of the machines and then onto a portable device?
No, the machine is brought into the judge and not allowed by those. Those are open in our simple count station with the judge watching the fields to be probed, so they can stare at it, they cannot pass the section anyway, they're still up to the law.
Okay, so we don't use any type of jump drive or anything to transfer votes? Have we had any issues ever of any of the cavulations, any of the machines in early voting are on election day, coming back with any type of corruption that prevents 100% certainty of collection of all of the votes that were, none?
No. We have a process in place that in our office at nine o'clock in the morning, that we have the envelope, each one of those, D-drives, that comes out of that, that's what's happening. There's already a new envelope, they have a long duration. As the judge breaks that field, they take that A-drive out, drops it into the envelope, it comes to the central count station where there's another judge watching it be counted. So everyone knows that, so we know how many of your shows have, and there are not even those left at the end of the night that we have a lot of drive while, which is quite , quite ridiculous.
And over the course of the last numerous elections where we've, we've been fully electronic, have we had any inconsistencies with respect to any of that component?
Not since I, like, they've taken them off.
Fair enough. With respect to audit logs that can be pulled, can, can we generate audit reports or audit logs by precinct, and by other, can the data be reported or printed out in manners, in different configurations?
That's going to be a hard question. I do know that at the end, when I do my, my central count station, I do those by a lot of logs, if I put out a log out, it could be depending on what's happened, how it comes to be, specifically to eight thousands of pages.
Because?
Because every keystroke is recorded.
And that, that's an important point. So every keystroke from every voter that entered anything on that machine is recorded, and so your audit, I would, I would presume that those printed logs are relatively lengthy.
Yes.
Okay. Are there any other questions for Ms. Warnix? No? Ms. Warnix, thank you. We may call you back, but for now, I really appreciate your time. Ms. Johnson, I see that you're here. Would you like to address Commissioners' Court at this time?
Yes.
Thank you.
Just so that I don't learn that being radical, because I can't, I prepared a, I didn't say it, I'm going to read that off. Most of you know who I am, but for the record, I, my name is Patty Johnson. I am an elected Republican Party Chair of B County. It has been my honor to serve as County Chair for the Republican, B County, Republican Party of B County for approximately twelve years or six terms. I have seen elections in B County change and spring run over the years. The integrity of the elections in B County is surpassed by none other that I've ever seen. This morning, when our staff are talking, I will always, and always ensure that the votes, the voters, and the data for B County are always respected. They ensure that each entity that has an election, whether school, city, county, or state, is conducted fairly and nonpartisan each and every time, and following the State Election Code of two but less. The County Election Committee, by statute, is comprised of the County Chair, the Tactic District Clerk, County Clerk, and both Party Chairs. It was a bipartisan unanimous decision, a repeat unanimous decision, by the committee to set up this office and maintain it in B County. The Elections Administrator's Office, or DEA, was set up by statute, public votes, and three open meetings in 2017. On May 8 of 2017, the Commissioners' Court voted and approved it at the request of the committee's An肃factors Election Code. We have a great recruitment place, great staff, and a good working relationship with all of the entities in the county that hold the election. To go back to, you say a ballot that are handed to counties with a huge mistake, it did service to the voters, it did bad, a bad business for this. ID, or identification, check on every voter who votes in person, votes totaled or reported or entered on the secure state website that at no time, and at no time, are voting machines ever connected to the Internet, ever connected to the Internet. From the standpoint of, from the standpoint of a targeted county, I have no complaints at all with the elections in B County. Out of 20 elected official business counties, 17 are for Republicans, three are for Democrats. In summary, to change anything, my intention is safe. The legislature, legislature, I think, the legislature has passed an addition to the Election Code where a paper audit will be available. Then has proposed it requires ID for ballots by mass as well as on person. That is not a provision yet. These are the only things that should be addressed. Thank you for your time, and we got to that B County, great state.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Before you step down, does anybody have anything, Commissioners have any questions for Ms. Johnson? Um, I do, of course.
Absolutely.
I forgot, it was a really good question, but I can't seem to recall what it is. When I do think of it, I'll call you back. I would ask, I'd ask for a little bit of clarification. The Commissioners' Court can dictate the cooperation of elections for constitutional elections and for the general election in November. I believe, Ms. Warnix, you said that in your, in your statements.
That is correct.
With respect to primary elections, of which we have one coming up in March, I guess, theoretically?
May.
May, okay, sorry, May, 2022. That, whether that is electronic or 100% paper is within the exclusive province of who?
Myself, in this county. At the time, unless the Secretary of State office changed it, or the legislature took down on it.
Right, so I think the, the point is important that it stands right now with respect to the primary election for the Republican Party in the county of B, you are going to, if we said we wanted to do a paper, if we wanted you to do a paper ballot, you would say, no, we're doing electronic?
That would be a, a, not just.
And is there any reason, I think, do we have the Chair of the Democrat Party in B County present? I know that they, they've had a change recently, and I think that's the only reason that they're not represented today. Ms. Johnson, you've worked closely with Democrat Party Chairs over the course of your last six terms as Harvard Republican Party Chair. Do you have any doubt in your mind that the Democrat Party Chair would request, would not request electronic ballots just as you did right now?
I would doubt it very seriously, I wouldn't want to assume. The threat system probably would not, I have to speak to the current, who that is.
Right, thank you. I don't think I have any other questions, is, nothing? Okay, great. Ms. Johnson, thank you so much. Ms. Warnix, you identified, uh, partners, did I, Mr. Servant, is that what it is? Did I get that right? Mr. Servant? No?
I'd like to make it.
Okay, well, I guess I'll give you permission.
I'd like to introduce you to my colleague, Mrs. Johnson, he's from Heart and Civic, uh, Washington, Texas, he's been with Heart for 14 years. Big welcome.
I'm going to say thank you to the officials and Laura Rad, and I was more than happy to be here, answering these questions, and you, Mr. Servant of Heart and myself, and what I brought. Heart and Civic is an often-based company, our headquarters, our manufacturing facility is one hundred miles down in Austin. I, more than I've been in Heart for 14 years, we manufacture in general. Everything is done in Austin, in the state of Texas, employed Texans, I'm a proud Texan. I'm very happy to see our machines in B County and in the other areas of the county in the state. As Laura has mentioned, nothing about voting system is connected to the Internet, cannot be, is air-dashed, good luck to trying, I would see representation of our secrets. Designed that way, it's basically the, every component of a voting system, so if we are separated from the voting system, it's not a component of our system, or varies, is certified by E A C at a federal level and by the state of Texas. There are only two certified vendors in the state, Heart and ESNL, that mean one of the highest certifications when they try. So every component of the system is certified on the state, it's all proprietary, the cable proprietary, they are actually versioned either, so where someone can walk into the USB port, it looks that way, but it's ultimately not. You can connect something with USB to it, nothing's going to happen, it's, the system just won't work for me, it's impossible. And also, so the system that the county currently has is all of a chance. What I want to talk about is hybrid voting system. It looks very similar to what the voters in B County use now. There's a controller module, poll worker access that produces that access code, that the judge brought up. Along with that access code, the voter edition of blank sheet of ballot box, they go to the dual device, they enter their access code, enter through blank sheet, they make their ballot contest collections, the other touchscreen, just like they do now, none of that has changed. When they're done, and they are satisfied with the choices they made, they print out their vote records, as it was called, they verify their collection, human verifiable, they decide that how the selection they made are what they want, but at that point, they have not passed the ballot. So when they're satisfied, oh, which is a Z machine there, which is a scanner one, they place their ballot through that machine, and that is what has, what kind of has the ballot. So the first two devices do not contain any past vote records whatsoever. The controller that produces the access code is not connected to the voter registration system, that produces the ballot box. What comes out of the B R system is just the ballot board that is received and validated. While your name may be on that paper, no one can about various systems connected to a voter's name is to have each ballot that you can identify, that can be identified by the system, but nothing tied that to the voter.
Could you talk a little bit more about, you said a blank piece of ballot, a blank page, uh?
Ballot box.
Thank you. Ballot stock sheet is, in the system, is that, is that ballot stock, is it printed, or with a number on it, or is it just a blank piece of paper?
So the way that the ballots are built, in the built hardware, you can turn on a ballot ID or serial number, and you need to identify, that can turn your hardware on during the building of the election database, but once turned on, it cannot be turned off. So the county agency has serial numbers for ballots, and we need ID, that's going to be on our internal ballot. And it's unique to the system itself, so it's not like, you know, George Morgan, we can say, well, this number of ballots is three, we can't create that vaccine. It's, this is impossible.
Okay. Yes, so what that would do for you would give you consecutive ballots, and there wouldn't be one missing, because the numbers would be consecutive, is that correct?
So, the way the system is designed, each sheet is linked, as a cash code, or an access code produces, once that access code is entered into one of the ballot machine devices, say, you're the first voter today, you get the first ballot, well, the first access code in there, that ballot will be number one. And then so on and so forth. So if you have four or five machines in a row, and you have all five voters voting, the first voter that produces the ballot will be one, not the next machine will be two, the next ballot number will be two. And that, that's the serial number of ballots, but each also has a unique ID, which is unique to that ballot, which is right there.
So after you make that last step, and you place your paper ballot in there, what happens to that paper ballot?
So the ballot is in a secure ballot box, that was in, for early voting by state effective requirements, early voting ballot box has to have two separate key box, so there would be two models on that one. Then drops some intended equipment to a secure transport back, so then it's in the night, whenever the judge decides to, you know, close polls and think it was ballot out, the machine produces a poll holder board, and then whatever process the county has as far as reaching the ceiling of the lots would have to have, that's outside of the process, I think.
What is the closed polls result?
So the polls, for early voting, you can't have it by election code until the poll or poll election night. So for early voting, there'll be a poll holder board that produces a number of ballots cast on the end, but doesn't show how many votes a candidate received, because that would be how much it changes. Okay, I'm sure we're going.
Mrs. Servant, just a question. I, I read with interest Senate Bill 598, it was passed, and, and it's commonly referred to as a paper ballot initiative. And Denton County, which is one of the 10th largest counties in Texas, the newspaper headline says Denton County returns to paper ballots, and it's because they're going to implement Senate Bill 598. And it's my understanding, that's what we're talking about here, is that sheet that you put in and it's printed out. And, and we have information regarding that Senate Bill on the table, if someone is interested in it, goes into effect September 1st, has to be implemented by every county by, I think, 2026. And would you talk a little bit about that Senate Bill? I have the information, but please.
Right, so the Senate vote is in pass, that's 598, which mandates a move to a paper trail for all voting systems in the state, regardless of the mayor. So any county that has an electronic D R N system likely has to move to a paper trail, which is what the system produces. Denton, which is a hard customer, they have what's called a ballot on demand system in their home location, so order from them, must have certified via the voter registration system, then that order is given, produce a paper ballot on demand. But yeah, so there is a mandate to move, so it has to be a paper trail by September 26th.
Thank you. That's, that's the way I understood it.
Yes, sir.
It has to be paper.
Does this setup that you've been discussing, does it comply with this new statute?
It does.
So it would be up to Ms. Warnix to decide how in the process of holding or saving or securing those ballots, paper ballots for the plate?
If, if I understand it correctly, the whole process is in the legislation on exactly how it has to be done, period.
I think what you're talking about is at the end of the night, Commissioner?
Yes, at the end of the night, what happens to those paper ballots?
They have a process in place that they cannot be opened with both judges, or have the other judges you have there, to witness, break the seal, or to unlock, little bit of the field of ballots. It's kind of a rolling dock that sits in there, that sits in that, so they don't have to try to carry those paper ballots out, they'll be able to roll it, but they have to secure it in with witnesses and sign off on it that they witnessed it before they bring it back over that line.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions?
Not at this time, please, proceed. Sorry to interrupt.
No, 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 um, so I can give you demonstration of the system if you would like, I can take the microphone, you're?
Sure, yes. I think we're all very interested in it. Yep. They never work.
So the system is designed on a common platform, so as you can keep it voting, and then keep recent elections, the devices will exactly have the devices that you've been using. It's designed that we can use for poll worker training, if a poller can't have to use one device, they can basically use all the ones. If a poll worker can't have to use one device, they can basically use all the devices. So once the voter has gone to the R system, again, separated from the voting system, complete different certification process for that, it is air gas. The poll worker will then scan it, that Barco will produce the ballot file, there's nothing on screen about voters, it's just the precincts, one, one, and the ballot box. The poll worker did that work in access code, and it's a blank sheet paper, the arrow to show voters how to vote in the device. So the same process we've been doing, take your access code to, it's called Duo, enter your five digits number. Very clear instructions on how to paper it to the insert, it's landing right here, the image on screen is the exact image of the ballot, so you can try to make it over the left.
Yes.
So it enters, you get a big grid check mark, for the teachers in the audience, you did it right. And that's very clear instructions, uh, I brought a P E A device for just to have more pictures for P E A voters. But show the voters their ballot, the same interface that voters are using currently, nothing has changed about that. They go through a bit for selection, exactly what they've been doing. Uh, if you try to overvote, you cannot. If you definitely undervote, you choose not to vote in the contest. I'll vote quickly. So once they give you the review voting screen, same screen that voters are reviewing out, they review their selections. When they're done, now it says instead of cash ballots, it's grid paper, so they're gonna print the vote. Um, E A P regulation requires to confirm that you want to print. So the device will print your vote record right here. And this is a thermal ballot box, it's archival record, last, in, in a specific condition, it's highly controllable for twenty years, so there's no fear of it being over going away. So, and I can add this around here, but the vote record contains the contest and just the selection that you made, it doesn't contain every single candidate, just specifically the selections a voter has made. So our technology uses optical fingerprint recognition, so when I play this through the standlight, it's looking for what's here on the paper, the letters on the page. So if I'm all taken in, Mark Brown, Jim Jonathan, Sheldon Allen, who's on here, the candid vice will note that, but he can't get the letters. Of course, there's a question about the Barco here, the Barco contains no vote records, do not put any vote records in the Barco at all, because that's not truly seen, our final, we do not read Barco. The Barco is a security hash that lets us scan the vote, this is the real ballot records from this election, from this device. So one time, then, you'll take a copy, make a hundred copies, and try to scan it, it was just a one, the rest you reject it, and in very kind of a way would say, this ballot is our own. So when the voter walks over to scan, then you like here, very clear instructions on how to enter, there's all the guides. Whether in America, they have a good vote record.
Mr. Thomas, um, let's say the paper printout, uh, reflects a vote that I didn't mean to do. What do I do then?
So you can take that to the election desk, they will then spoil the ballot, and the county will have a process in place, what's that they do now, bring your county's spoiled ballot, that we're going to spoil ballot envelope from, from right there. Um, and then they will have to issue a new access code for the blank sheet of the ballot box, you have a star.
And, and when I'm reviewing the, the printout after I voted on the machine, um, are there other options that, that Hart Intercity has, uh, with respect to the, the printout data, or is the consolidated data, who I voted for, is that the option?
I don't think.
Well, if I wanted a, like...
You, you want a receipt of how you voted?
Yeah, but, yeah, I was thinking that a paper ballot would be printed out, and I would see the options, and I would see, you know, my selection, if there were, you know, option A and option B, little box, and option A would be
Not with our consent, just power, whatever your selection is. And there, and to be clear, there is no receipt of voter details and, uh, that
No, no, not, no, no, I meant
About one thing is clear for everyone, there is no, any kind of paper system, anywhere in the country, you're not allowed to have it, to see how you vote against the law in the country.
Right, but here, you at least have the ability to look at the list of votes that you made and go for the spoliation, you said, or spoiler.
Correct.
If needed.
Correct, so before you pass your ballot, the voter has the option to review on screen and in your hand, your selection.
Does it come in a larger font?
The vote, the vote record does not come in a larger font, it's designed as a way to, to remove large selections, you can get all the fonts that are on there.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas.
But they have the option to change the font style if I want.
Okay. And they can still, they, like you said, they still, each voter, I would, I would be reviewing my votes before I print out the, the vote sheet, so if there's an issue, I can always go back and change my votes.
Correct.
Is there other questions?
No.
Here, here, I don't answer. I have a few other questions. Um, is, is there any, any capability at all, uh, for the, the Hart Intercity voting systems that we have, are, are they capable of connecting, uh, to the internet at all with a wired connection, like the, the voting boxes themselves?
No, they're not.
Not at all?
Not at all.
And, and wirelessly, is there any manner for them to be communicating, uh, with the internet or with any other device remotely, in, in any respect?
Not at all.
And, um, with respect to the, the audit logs that are printed out, um, can, can, uh, can the elections administrator, if she so wishes, when she prints those out, or she wanted additional logs, some kind of, or summary data from the machine, can they be separated by precincts?
So the audit logs are basically, they cannot be manipulated by a person, whether it's vendor or a P E A. Uh, if you're gonna print the audit log, then all, the audit log can change, you can change the date, over a date range, so you want it from all the voting period of, of elections, you can do it that way, but you can't manipulate what has been the audit logs are as precinct information under.
And, and maybe it's my inarticulate, uh, use of the word audit log, I apologize. Are the machines capable of printing a report by precinct of the votes that they, not an audit log, but?
Yes.
So, so if, if there was a, uh, if the elections administrator at the end of, uh, the general election, I, I, I can't imagine that you could do this legally during early voting at the end of the night, uh, get a, get a report of the number of voters from which precinct voted on any given machine, but at the end of the, at the end of the general election, you can print out reports that would have that?
It cannot, it cannot be any tabulation until after the polls close.
And then after the polls close, though, you could run a report, machine by machine, on the votes that were tabulated on it, on a precinct basis.
It will produce a report that shows how many cash flow records were put through each device, and how many ballots were produced from each Duo. Um, but it doesn't give you a summary of the actual, well, the candidates, but like, you know, votes for yourself, it doesn't give you that. Uh, the tabulation software can produce those reports, uh, it can be filtered to show, you know, precinct twenty, the candidates are here, how many votes each one received.
Okay, so that's the raw data, is put into the tabulation software, and the software can spit out any number of different reports that Mr. Warnock might want.
Correct.
And just, just to note, that tabu- that tabulation system is not capable of being looked at in any way.
Okay, it's too, it's completely incapable of connecting to any other device that doesn't have the unique cord or a fixed wired internet connection or a wireless internet connection, or any other wireless device that's passing by it.
No, no office position is in so talented in the vicinity.
Is there, what, what security measures exist with respect to the, the small period of time between when the data is, is taken from the machine? Is the data that's dumped directly from each voting machine into the tabul- into the machine that controls the tabulation software?
Yeah, so when, at the end of the night, when they are tabulating, uh, the cash flow records, each game device, at a distinct, we're not producing the tabulation software, it's taking an audit of that, we drive, so we know the, or, and if it be driven by five computer, how many cash flow records can one of these channels connect.
Okay. Other, other questions? I could go over.
No, I don't think you want to.
I, I don't think I have any more questions at this time. Mr. Thomas, I'm sure I could come up with one. I'll wait till you sit down. Okay. I have reviewed, sorry, I have reviewed the, uh, list of, of individuals who have signed up, uh, and thank you to everybody that, that filled out our record of, of being present here this evening. I know it's always a little weird when a governmental entity is asking you to give your information up, but I assure you, it helps us form a record, uh, so that we know in time, uh, how many people did show up, and of course, with the day of technology, we've got a video, we've got a recording, but, uh, uh, sometimes paper has, has, and has an additional component, or as a part of the process, is a benefit, which is rather timely, considering what we're discussing here. Somewhere, uh, amongst these papers, I have, uh, I have the list of visitors who signed in today, you indicated that they wanted to speak on behalf of, of the group that I have, uh, called Mr. Brown's group. I have that list. Um, in that list, I had two individuals, one, uh, and I don't know actually even if these individuals are, uh, speaking on behalf of the, of Mr. Brown's group, uh, that is the citizen group that I've given, uh, opportunity to speak, uh, in address Commissioner's court tonight, so if you, uh, stand up and start speaking and you're not talking about, uh, or advocating for paper ballot initiative, I'm gonna know, and I'm gonna ask you to stop speaking, because you violated my rules. Uh, so I'm gonna throw the list out here, I'm gonna have y'all speak, and then when y'all are done, um, I'm gonna ask Mr. Presley to come up. I would respectfully request, I've asked that Mr. Brown, I've spoken to Mr. Brown, I've spoken with Mr. Brown, um, numerous times, of course, over the last several weeks, but certainly since last Thursday, Friday, um, and, and I did, I did share with them that it is my request that we keep this part of the presentation between fifteen and thirty minutes. So I have noted, I have seven, uh, individuals that would like to speak on behalf of the group, uh, tonight, and then I have Ms. Presley, I know Ms. Presley, uh, she and I met, uh, earlier today, uh, she has some very interesting information, germanic information, information that I think is important for us, commissioners, uh, when, uh, when we're going into, uh, uh, considering, uh, taking action, not taking action, uh, wanting to learn more, um, and so I, I don't want to, uh, I, I don't want the Brown group to eat up all of Ms. Presley's time, so I would ask you please to be cognizant of that. My list is this, and, and if y'all wanna jump up and disagree with me, this is gonna be the one opportunity for you to speak out of turn. I'm gonna, I'm gonna have to go first, uh, Mrs. Trial, Mrs. Wicker, Mr. Neal, Mrs. Gibbitt, Mr. Jackson, Mrs. Warner, and Mr. Reeves. Does anybody have an objection to that list? Hearing none, we will proceed. Mrs. Trial, you have the floor, would you like to speak?
Yes, I do.
Oh, I'm sorry, and, uh, Mr. Brown, you're gonna go right before, um, Mrs. Warner, I'm sorry, I've got an additional sheet here. Thank you. And just make sure you speak loud.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am. And, and a little slow, so the computer can pick this up for everybody out watching on the internet.
Okay. Uh, this is a letter that I wrote, uh, to the editor of the E A P, uh, it's trying to send to this, so some of this is on the news, I provided a copy of each member of the support of the county judge. Uh, and I added, you know, to the letter that said, uh, only commissioners have that. Although the seeking acknowledgement receipt of my letter a week ago, it was not printed in today's paper, uh, August nineteenth. As stated in my letter, which I'm going to read, I respectfully ask the commissioners' court to give serious consideration to the paper ballot initiative from we, the people who you start. And this is the letter. Citizens of B County, there is a petition before the county court to return to voting by paper ballot in each of our own precincts with proper ID, eliminating the need to travel to B Bell to vote. At each of the last three commissioner court meetings, a number of people have addressed the court in favor of this initiative. No one has voted against it. While the electronic voting appears to be simple and efficient on a service, surface, it is fraught with opportunities to be hacked and manipulated. This was shown to be true on both statewide and national levels in the last election. Unqualified voters and deceived people voted, and in some cases, over one hundred percent of eligible voters cast ballots in their county and are safe. How is that possible? Because unlike paper ballots, electronic votes are not verifiable, there is no paper trail. With the influx of hundreds of thousands of illegal aliens in our southern border, the opportunities for these non-sixtons to vote electronically is huge. These people are being dispersed across every state in the country, and unfortunately, there are intruders individuals willing to die them in the voting process. There will likely be an argument over the cost of returning paper ballots. However, this will be minimal compared to the building of our jail, the rebuilding of our jail, the ongoing cost to maintain this jail, and it's still not yet compliant. Honest elections are no less important, and the preservation of our democracy is working. This is not a political issue when everybody has followed the same rules. This is moot, but I said, I would urge everyone to pass on this information by word of mouth, and some people do not subscribe to this newspaper. Now is the time to let your voice be heard. Please take the time to express your thoughts to your commissioners. The court has not issued any statement on this topic. Hopefully, that leaves all aspects of this initiative with a serious consideration. And as I say, as stated, uh, as I said, I respectfully ask the court to give serious consideration, as stated in my letter. Uh, I do think this meeting has been, that's all I had to say, is a thank you, Captain Powell, in my letter. But I do think this meeting has been extremely informative. Uh, I appreciate Lyndon York, U C Year, all of these folks who have spoken. It helps, uh, to know that these things are more secure than I thought. Uh, we know that there were shenanigans in the prior election, it's been shown, uh, repeatedly. So, a group of people here have great concerns about the election in Texas. So it still is a decision to court all night, and I'm certain with all the information that you have been given, and pros and cons, that great decision will be made, I don't think anyone here, uh, uh, is any less, uh, uh, preferring that this ballot, or we all want honest elections, that's all we want. So the best method needs to be put in place, and I'm certain
It went on for three days, it had all of these IC gurus, it was amazing, and I spent a lot of time watching it. So these are the things that I'd like to share with you, that we learn. There is no way that these electronic cannot be hacked. There is a program, one of them, called Paypal. It can be downloaded into your cell phone, it can be downloaded into your permit, and no one knows it. You don't have to be hooked up to the internet, you can be hacked. And so, one of the things that otherwise needs to be watched is a little more of the issues that we saw on this program, and I'm into the public news, and I'm already frustrated by all of this. Maybe, maybe it's just overwhelming, and paper ballots have to be easier than that. And I wanna read one thing, I just stopped it just a second. But it's, one of the things that talks about section three is network connections and viral technology prohibiting voting machines from being capable of being connected in the next thorough communication or in time. It doesn't have to be hooked up to be hacked, and I'd like to know what prohibits, how can you prohibit it? So, I do wish to, hopefully, that you will consider paper ballots, because I believe that's the only way it can be done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Wicker. Mr. Neal?
You are next, Mr. Brown.
There you go. Kenny, Eric. You're right, Kenny, I'm gonna tell you something. I look at these machines, and I look at this breath of fresh air that I grew up with. Is there anybody in here that would rather do that or rather do this? What do you think is the truest way to get a true vote? And the guy up there, he drives, he can, he can do that. And the honored gentleman with the big Texas feet, ten percent proud, I'm excuse you, Texas proud, he's ten percent Texas proud, because Hart and the Civic is eighty or ninety percent owned by H.I.G. in Miami, Florida, a worldwide venture capital conglomerate. You wanna have the funds, look up and find out what H.I.G. stands for. And the voting in Texas and the United States is controlled ninety percent by three electronic voting machines, E F N S, Dominion, as you've all heard of, and Hart and the Civic. And they have systematically gone throughout the United States to three thousand counties and hijacked the county electors one by one. They're all privately owned companies. Your vote is controlled by a privately owned company. That's just incredible. I know, let's start the needle, I've got to vote about the moral company, about the new age company. Now, thanks to what it really is, yeah, ten percent of Texas proud, I've got the letter, this is the Hart at the race ownership, it's got their letter here on it. H.I.G. Venture Capital, they have offices worldwide, Europe, Latin America, who owns that? Well, it's, it's been Robin and his son have a piece of it. The Hart CEO himself confessed, yeah, we have Chinese components in these machines. Well, maybe the Chinese own part of it. Do you know, they wouldn't tell Congress, why would they tell you not? It's just before Congress, they wouldn't tell Congress, they wouldn't admit to it, you see? This morning, you know, they say thirty thousand dollars, get rid of the second ballots. I called, I found out again, what do we spend to get this? So I looked at the budget, near as I can tell, we paid about four hundred grand, you know, for the package, we give you the razor, now you gotta tap the razor blade. How much a day? Oh, they're about seventy grand a year. Thirty cents for a good minute, I don't know about you. Oh, by the way, that's my money. That's your money, you see? The Brennan Center for Justice, the Non-Partisan Law and Policy Institute, you can pull them up on the internet, read their files. What is that name? Brennan, Brennan Center for Justice, Brendan? Brendan, B R E N N A A. Okay? The National Academy of Sciences, Engineering, and Medicine, saying, I quote, paperless voting machines should be removed from service as soon as possible. Okay? Who's that? The National Academy of Sciences, Engineering, and Medicine. The U.S. Senate Select Committee on Intelligence, these systems present an unnecessary security risk. I'm not blaming this guy, I've done what he's done for forty years, come across the street, I'll tell you, a quarter of a chip in it, somebody hijacked it, I might know off the road, you won't even know it. I'm not blaming him, I'm doing the same business, but I'm not involved in the election in the United States. We don't even know, we know who they declared the winner in two thousand, remember the hanging cats, the front row votes? But we don't know who got the most votes. Nine months later, we don't know who got the most votes, well, remember, we know who that was for, and, but we don't know who got the most votes. Oh, man, this is, this is great business, you see? So, when, when you get a look at the evidence, of the Congress of the United States, they called all three elements, E F N S, all right, E F N S, Dominion, and Hart and the Civic. They wouldn't answer any questions. They wouldn't tell where the money goes, who gets the money, how much money they get. The Congress of the United States said, voting machine companies are by any measure some of the merfiest and inscrutable firms in the civilian private sector. And we got it in Big Town, Big Town, Texas. You know, George Brady, he sang that song, he was good there, still is. He said he had some ocean property in there in Omaha. We didn't have it all, so we bought some of them. Not sure what we paid for it, but we bought some of them. And we bought it from H.I.G. Capital Investments based in Miami, Florida. You know, all I can think of is when they found out, and the cotton saws have made New York City, they did a vote. So I'd have had a private company of this stature, H.I.G. Capital, secure a listed contract to control my vote and your vote from Big Town, Texas. Can anybody answer that question? 'Cause I don't remember voting on that. Oh, by the way, if I'd voted on this, their machine would've told me, you see? And I wanna tell you that, that, I wanna review it. Three sentences. Walk through them this morning, I really do. This is from the Secretary of State, Secretary of State of Texas. And these are just three of the things she has to do that involve these machines. The present USB devices, scanners, printers are connected with proprietary interfaces only. Various device models, the printer and scanner side of the USB cables are small. Data chain cable is proprietary. The various types of D R E, types Duo can be data chained, scanners and touch wipers are not data chained. All devices now have additional features menu accessible at boot time, which includes validator, which is used to produce device hash files and change certificate sets used to update security certificates. The same functionality is also provided on the workstation. God, that just so happens to hurt. Can you figure that out? Can you gentlemen figure that out? When it comes to election time? I can think of it. Kirk Gannon, Sheriff, pull this off, Kirk Gannon, Sheriff. And you know what? If you don't know, hard place to choose to vote. And, Sheriff, I'm having fun. The serious part of this is, I can't do a lot about the national, and I can't do anything to do a lot about the state, I really cannot. And so here we are, the outcome, Big Town, 'cause we all see what's going on. You know, anybody in Congress? No, but I will. Well, that was five things, but what about these guys all in America? But we elected these gentlemen, and I know the sheriff, I know the judge, I know the commissioners, and we elected them. We've got people like them, because if they can control that machine, they can put somebody else in there. We're gonna be getting a lot of strangers, Big Town. That's okay, I'm a strange person. But I wanna do things right. And a lot of people say, why are you just old school, loser? I'm real school. Hear me? Not old school, real school. So please, please, park these machines and give me my hat back. Please.
Thank you, Mr. Neal. Mrs. Gibbitt? Come on down. And remember, everybody, the more you speak, the less Ms. Presley's present. You have an opportunity to speak to commissioners' court, are very important ones, if you'd like to speak, on behalf of your group.
And the secretary of government, the former governor, the chairman of the county section, did I understand that you were saying that we can only speak, only have the paper ballot initiatives?
That's who has the floor right now.
Can you only speak for it?
Are you, are you a member of the, that's who?
No, I am not.
That's who has the floor right now, Mrs. Gibbitt.
So I'm gonna speak.
Are you speaking on behalf of the Paper Ballot Initiative?
Yeah, I'm not speaking for it.
No, 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 if you're against it, no, ma'am, you do not have the, I did not, I have not given y'all anything.
All right, okay.
Are you against it?
Yes.
Then sit down.
Really?
Yes, ma'am, please come back.
So you're unwilling to hear?
I, I don't think, maybe there's some confusion about how I set out the, the order of...
No, I haven't what you said, that's why I'm asking the question.
Yes, ma'am, no, no, if you please have a seat, if you please have a seat, I'm so glad that you let me know that you do wanna speak, and I can consider that after the Paper Ballot Initiative vote to get their term. Thank you so much, Mrs. Gibbitt. So, when I read out that list, I presume, and my apologies, I presume that they were all Paper Ballot Initiative individuals, and that because Mr. Brown and Mr. Carter could not be here today, that all of the individuals had lined up to share their support that they would have given. So, Mrs. Gibbitt, I'll give you an opportunity to speak, let me let the then have their floor first. Yes, ma'am. Apologize, I apologize for my misunderstanding of the situation, my fault, not yours. Uh, Mr. Jackson, are you speaking on behalf of Paper Ballot Initiative?
Yes, sir.
Please come forward, sorry, you're next in line.
Well, I'm happy to be here tonight, and I've learned a lot, and I'm pretty satisfied as to the quality and safety of our existing voting situation as it exists and is controlled by the legislature. Apparently, everybody's doing a good job. That hasn't always been the case here. We've had a lot of voters roll over the years, most of it pretty far in the past, mostly involving Mayor Lynn Mallett's and local voters harvesting. And I think our previous county attorney, Jose Alentzada, actually filed criminal charges some years ago, and it's pretty much stopped the blatant voter fraud that was taking place. What I can tell is it looks like we're doing pretty good. And I don't want anybody to think that we think that either the commissioners have done anything wrong, which is probably habit, and nor have the electorate been free. What we're concerned about is exactly what Smokey Neal was talking about. You know, the biggest corporations in America have been hacked. Amazons have had, Apple Computers have had, the big, uh, United Healthcare, all of our application information on our health has been hacked, nobody is admitting from hacking. The only way we can ensure, one way or the other, that our ballot is so secure is to make one of them about. That way you can hide it back. The ballot's a private, nobody's supposed to know what we wrote. But if we make out a paper ballot, and we sign it, and we sign it, there is, it can always be audited. But once it gets into the machine, once it leaves, it goes to Austin, I know that they say, but I don't trust anybody, not personally, but I don't trust any machine, because they can hack anything nowadays. And we all know it, we see it every day, we go on the internet and look up, I looked up for a variety of machine, exercise machine, and the next thing I know, I get exercise machine heads. They know everything we're doing, it's impossible to not be hacked at this moment. And I would hope that the commissioners, even though it's gonna be some trouble, that we would go back, we don't know what you're gonna be, you may all get voted out, and the committee may change, and the hackers may be bad actors someday, and it may be sooner than we think. And we want a system here that will withstand all bad actors, and paper ballots will pretty much withstand any kind of voter fraud, as long as we have Secretary of State of Texas who is implementing prosecuting voter fraud. So, I encourage you to make, go ahead and make a change, and let go of paper ballots, and then we don't have to look back. Again, it doesn't against what's happening now, everything seems to be on the other end, but it's not always gonna be that way, or it could not be that way, and this will head off.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Uh, Mr. Brown?
Thank you, I'm excited to meet you last night.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Uh, Mrs. Warner?
Hi, thank you, last night.
Thank you, Mrs. Warner. Uh, Mr. Reeves? Are you speaking on behalf of the Paper Ballot Initiative?
Yeah.
Okay.
Judge, who would you tell a couple times?
I'm gonna be real, I'm, I'm gonna be friendly with y'all, y'all, y'all spent thirty minutes so far, but actually, it's twenty-five, but I started about ten minutes late, so right now, actually, you're fifteen minutes in.
Thank you, Judge, thank you, commissioners, thank you, everyone for being here. First of all, I'd like to take a look at the judge's socks, he's got a wild ass sock on, man.
Very un-American. Uh, Mr. Reeves, can you speak up or more into the mind as we're having a hard time?
I said, check out the judge's sock.
What's going on? I heard you, but I'm... For everybody else.
First of all, I'd like to commend everybody that we've been involved in lots of, after the many years, although there have been a lot of work for the next round, your hard work, your diligence, your true, your form that we would expect in an American vote is because that is the single most important thing we can do every time the vote comes around. However, I don't trust those things. And I don't trust those things, first of all, because they are, even right now, they're interconnected, through the electoral system. And whether you believe it or not, the electoral system is a form of transmission for communication. Those three machines could talk to each other, but under the right conditions, they'd act like they would. I could be proven wrong, since they're, I don't trust them. And take a look at what's happened with the electoral system on the East Coast, they broke the natural gas system, would intact, it's a good computer, they've been through electoral systems. They wish it was in their old precincts. They should require government ID, they should require voter cards in order to get a paper ballot, which is physical, I can see it, I can mark into it, and I can deposit it, and hopefully, it's gonna get counted the way it's, the way I voted. So, and, and this, that goes back to... And whether you believe it or not, the electoral system is a form of transmission for communication. Those three machines could talk to each other, but under the right conditions, they'd act, like they... I could be true to all things there. I don't trust them. Uh, and take a look at what's happening with the electoral system on the East Coast. They've got a natural gas system with its act, that's completely computer, they could have been through electoral systems. It wishes votes in their own precincts. Uh, they should require government ID. They should require voter cards in order to get a paper ballot, which is physical. I can see it, I can mark into it, and I can deposit it, and hopefully, it's gonna get counted the way it's, the way I voted. So, and, and this, that goes back to history. You always should have been voting in your own precinct. It goes back to biblical times. Joseph and Mary, the gap, he goes to Bethlehem to register. You should all be doing the same thing. People in your own precinct know who you are, less likely to wear any kind of paper fraud. Votes are valuable, and a con, comment was made that this, you know, going to paper ballots should, uh, cost about thirty thousand dollars. Thirty thousand dollars to make sure my vote is accurate and counted right, your vote is counted right? I have something to say. Yes, I did vote, and here it is. That's chicken feed. Thirty thousand dollars chicken feed, not even a small price of paper ballot, accurate election, that we all can have confidence in. We don't want to be a mere corporate county. We don't want to be a pencil major. We don't want to be a Fulton County. We want to be accurate. We want to be upfront with how we voted. One person, a verified eligible vote for one verified eligible voter, that's the way it needs to be. We should be voting in our own precinct. But even if the votes are cast, let's say the machines are, are absolutely passive. All paper ballots are in. Doesn't guarantee voter security. And this is extremely important for, uh, the people who are counting the votes, the captains, the representatives, and whatnot. Let me give you a quote from history. I don't think I need to say anymore. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve. I always enjoy good controversy. Before I call Miss Presley up, is there anybody else who would like to speak on behalf of the Paper Ballot Initiative? Okay, is there anybody who feels that there's time to like to speak, or if we have that kind of time, that Miss Presley's done, if you'd like to speak, I really don't want... I don't want anybody to leave this meeting without wanting to address Commissioner's Court, not having the opportunity to give apologies. And I will, I do want to hear from you, I want to hear from everybody else, but if there's anybody else at this time on Paper Ballot Initiative, Miss Presley, if you'd like to address Commissioner's Court?
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am?
If you can get a mask, if you can come get a mask?
I'm sorry?
If you have your mask?
Oh, yeah, of course, Mr. Reeve. Would you come get your mask real quick? Just don't breathe. Okay, now breathe.
I am way short. The thing I can't see around this, I have the nodules of like, you know, protection shirts. You know, where is that right now?
Thank you, ma'am.
How many gentlemen, commissioners, I am Dr. Laura Presley. I hold a PhD in chemistry with physics on the University of Texas at Austin. And I've been seventeen years in the city conductor industry. As a manager and engineer, and I carry four, we was packaging technology. And I've managed teams all over the world in Malaysia, and China, and Japan, uh, all over the world on city conductor, uh, yield enhancement, and device manufacturing. I was a candidate in Travis County in two thousand fourteen. And cost heart and significant change corrupted my multiple ballot boxes that had been electronic votes on it. I filed a lawsuit, and went and taken it to the Texas Supreme Court. Because the case, uh, with the two-year election term, uh, the case, the Texas Supreme Court did not consider the merit of the election time delay in the electronic vote corruption issue that we raised. And I just feel like God has put me on a path. I just had the door closed, the county was not protected to do the two-year term, and it was moved out to Texas Supreme Court. But I started going around the state, looking at all counties around the state, and there were some things I was noticing that were consistent with the electronic voting machine. Very concerning. I started a company called Tree Texas Elections. And I trained election watchers all over the state at the central counting stations, not the polls. Because I agree with what you said, sir. Stalin said it's death. It doesn't matter who votes, it matters who counts. And that's where the river meets the road. I've trained over three hundred watchers at the central counting stations in Texas, in all large counties, small and medium counties. And we've seen, even without any evidence of fraud in the counting of the vote, counting of the electronic vote. I have, uh, I don't know that I gave you one of the handouts, I think I did. There's a list of criminal and civil lawsuits right now in the state of Texas on both counting fraud. Not illegal voters, not absentee ballot voters, they, both counting fraud. Five cases in the Texas A.D. office, and there are four civil cases, I am expert witness in two of them. One of them, and both of them are doubt accepted. So one of the things I want to say, I'm really not married to any electronic voting system or complete hundred percent paper ballot counting voting system. What I want the voting system to have is that it be easy to detect fraud. It should be easy to detect it because one of the things is managed, is thou shalt not steal. Do we think people are going to continue to steal and covet and lie? That's going to happen. So the voting system should be easy, it should detect when that happens. And it's on standards, and it's on voters, to go prove that evidence in a court of law. The voting system, the electronic voting system on the market today, the vendors will not let you get to the software, they won't let you get to the machine if in a lawsuit, you alleged fraud. I'm saying, you can't get to the evidence. So how do you prove that we just stuck it up? There's a case in Dallas County. I was the expert witness on that case, Pari Percy. Many people who watch Mike and Del probably know that Pari Percy is a world renowned software expert. I was the expert on the case with Del. He was. We said, "We gotta get to the software to get to what happened, this fraud in that case." We couldn't get it. Texas Supreme Court would not let us get to it. That case is still pending right now, and they go back to the Texas Supreme Court. Very interesting case. Because it's hard to get to prove the fraud. So, one of the things I want to raise is, there are, I need one of those back, y'all don't mind? The one with the... Can I get through that one?
There you go.
Thank you. These voting systems, um, for example, the Harlem that's, that's up here, there's others in the state. Like I said, I'm not married to any of them. But they need to follow law. And if we're gonna do an audit of the election, or you have a contest that says we really don't get the evidence to prove it, how like happens or not? You have to have backup workers. I think we can all agree with that. You have to have backup workers for the election. There's multiple backup workers that are required by state law that are not being adhered to. One is, you're supposed to have a pre-number consecutively numbered ballot. And now, Commissioners, with you asking that question, you kind of got close to it. And they said, "Well, yeah, this is number one, we got one secret." My question is, how many number ones do you have? There's only supposed to be one number one with the state office, so they should secondarily number ballots starting with one. Doesn't say you have ten ones, seventeen ones. How many ones you got? It doesn't mean the state law. This system was certified to be state law. The counties, counties around the state are not adhering to it. So you have a choice. You have a choice to consecutively number these ballots, if you're certified to do it. I highly recommend that you follow the state law. There's an issue right now, Hood County's already at war with their election administration, who will not follow the statutes, and I listed here fifty-two point oh six two consecutively numbering the ballots that we've been in the A.D. office for the opinion right now. The second backup worker that has to be there for these voting machines, is you have, is, uh, thanks to what you go, fifty-six point oh six two. You have to have the original election returns for the precinct at the poll. You're supposed to print, what's called a result tape, at the poll, to have a backup order to then electronic counting it goes down later, after the fact. These machines can do a precinct level result, but it's a very long tape if you have a lot of different reasons. Counties around the state office cannot do that, follow that law. The Secretary of State is permitted not to follow that law. Again, you're just missing a backup order to prove fraud if you don't follow the law with these machines. The third issue, the other backup order, is at the central counting station where all the electronic results come in. And I think, if, um, if I, if I understood the EAG correct way, there's no tape that's printed at the poll on election day. And that's in violation, in my opinion, of sixty-six point oh two two. So, there's a tape that should be printed, the precinct returns according to sixty-six point oh two two. And I understand these machines are not printing it. If, if I'm wrong, I would love to hear that, and have, uh, see how these machines are adhering to sixty-six point oh two two, how these machines are adhering to fifty-two point oh six two, and how these machines are adhering to the Texas Administration Code eighty-one point six two that says you have to have precinct level timestamped with ballots or rest. And I think the audit laws for these machines, and they do not have the precinct level timestamp, timestamp, uh, data on the audit log. So if you don't have a good ballot, and you don't have the tape, and you don't have the correct audit log, you can't audit the data. You can't audit the, the election. So, my question would be, if y'all could ask a question, if the EAG is I can, how is you adhering to those three statutes? And I'd please, if you don't mind, if you've got it up there. It matters who counts the vote, and it matters what the backup workers are doing to prove the fraud, if it happens. Because if we don't ensure that, that there's backup workers, and that it's for the fraud to go get the evidence, in some days, each county, you might have a manager. Some have always been rural bathrooms. And the public may be considering that way, to live in, but something happens, and you can't go get the evidence to prove it. You're just stuck with it. But then, if he balked off and something happens. It doesn't matter if he balked off and something, something occurred on the machine. So, I'm here for any questions?
Uh, Ms. Presley, just real briefly, um, and, thank you, uh, for, for your, for your time.
Thank you for letting me speak. I'm very grateful. Thank you.
Yes, and, uh, but, and, and we, we met before this meeting, and, and we had a discussion. I pose...
I'm your host.
Oh, sorry, Mr. Host. We, we, uh, can hear me now. We, we met before this. I'm not trying to belittle Ms. Presley. Now I'm talking to myself here, uh, sweet built-up tone. Uh, Ms. Presley, I ask you these questions, uh, and, uh, and so just, just because we're talking about the statutes, and because of the statements that you, you made, and, and I, I know this is something that a lot of individuals in the public, and certainly, the Commissioners probably, they're here to pick up, uh, when you were, when you were discussing the statutes. There are other statutes in the Texas Election Code which appear to contradict directly with the provisions that, that you, uh, that you highlighted. And other provisions, actually. The Texas Election Code is replete with, uh, provisions that relate back to the specific provision that Ms. Presley, uh, discussed. There's also a constitutional, uh, component, uh, that, uh, I know Ms. Presley will be able to repeat it verbatim, I can't even remember what it is right now. But it deals with, uh, making, giving the legislature the exclusive authority to determine, uh, and maintain the state election. That's, that's a fair, isn't that what it is?
Well, it's a, it's a constitutional provision, and you have it, you can read it.
Yeah, let's just read it out.
A provisional, uh, constitutional provision contained in the eighteen hundreds. In all elections by the people, the vote shall be by ballot. The legislature shall provide the number of tickets, and the ticket's in the eighteen hundreds in the ballot. And make such other regulations as necessary to protect the country's law, and to start the security of ballot box, and this, like, everything.
They said it's much more eloquent.
It is, and they didn't do more than the eighteen hundreds.
But, but the point that I just want to raise, and I'll, I'll address, I'll give you an opportunity to, to respond, is, uh, Texas Education Code, section fifty-two point zero seven five, gives Secretary of State the authority to prescribe the form and content of ballot for an election using a voting system, including electronic voting system or voting system that uses direct recording of electronic voting machines or ballot marking devices to conform to the format requirements of the system. And then, uh, chapter one twenty-one, uh, there's, there's whole title, Title Eight, uh, of the Texas Election Code that relates to the voting system. And, uh, the first chapter in that title, um, uh, is section one twenty-one point zero zero one, applicability of other parts of the code. And it states, "The other title of this code applies to an election in which a voting system is used except to the extent that provision is inconsistent with this title or cannot feasibly be applied in a, in an election using a voting system." And I, I told you, without looking a lot of digging into the legislative history and legislative intent, um, my, my, uh, initial reaction to these two provisions and Title Eight is that it provided a flexibility that, um, that the, the provisions you're relying on, uh, do not provide, uh, to the, uh, Texas Secretary of State with respect to voting systems, changing how specifically with the numbering of ballots. It's a very important issue. Uh, in the old days, every paper ballot would be numbered. So your local elections judge and recruiting would receive, say, two thousand, that's way too many for me to count. One hundred, uh, ballots, and they would be numbered, one to one hundred. And then there's a, a procedure, and again, Ms. Presley knows this better than I do, is basically, um, there's a procedure to make those random within that precinct. But, at the end of the day, um, the precinct would know, "I have a hundred paper ballots to begin with, and I have a hundred paper ballots at, at the end of the day." And, and that's sort of, uh, uh, one of the, I think, one of the foundational concerns, uh, that you're raising today. My question, uh, my, what I'd like to give you an opportunity to address, uh, Commissioner's Court on, is, um, to give your side of my position, which is, I believe that these two statutes provide the flexibility to the legislature to, uh, uh, delegate that, that the process of making voting systems, these types of systems, conform to the laws of the state of Texas. Um, and I, I'd please give you opportunity to respond.
Sure. And I know, I remember what I do is refer to three election lawyers, apology. Three election lawyers, trial and appellate lawyers. This issue has come up, uh, in Hood County. And Hood County Attorney, Attorney General comes with an opinion on this complicated topic about lawyers. And three election lawyers, appellate and trial, all loose on ground election lawyers, have agreed with, uh, and I'm actually just kind of quoting what they say, that, uh, you should consecutively number, starting with one. The Secretary of State is not the legislature, they're the executive branch, and the legislature is to provide the numbering on the SOS. So, it's pretty simple. The executive branch, the Secretary of State, and the legislative branch, to be separate entities. And they're not sharing each other's job roles. So, um, these lawyers, three lawyers, eight-page documents, say it way better than I think. And, you know, this is pending in the books in the Attorney General's office. I think the issue is, these systems are certified to follow the law, to follow the consecutively numbering law. And you should do it. Very simple. And not rely on a potentially constitutionally, um, out of line Secretary of State who gave away work. um, out-of-line Secretary of State who gave away work. So, I think in the other two issues, the tape, how are these machines adhering to 56.062 in regards to tape, and how are these machines adhering to 81.62 in the administrative code, it's the central, like you lay. And you've got a good question, Judge, these machines print an audit log. That's not the audit log we're talking about, we're talking about the audit log of the main computer. That's the audit log of the main computer, has the document, time, date, stamp of when the ballot was read for a precinct. And I looked at the audit log for these machines in other counties, and they don't do it. You can't audit it. You don't have enough ballots, you don't have a tape, you don't have the correct audit log, you can't audit it. How can a candidate, or a measure, or a voter prove there was fraud if you don't have the ballot? Unless you can't get to the software to prove it. So, the thing to say in the ballot case, I was witness, only court witness in this case, and the lawyers made a really good argument on the software, that one cyber expert could say something, and another cyber expert could say something else, right? So, who do you go to to really resolve that? Well, you go to the software code, because that's the real witness, everybody knows this hearsay. And if you can't get to the machines or the software, you can't get to why certain things happen, the tally happens, and who did what. And the measure will not let you get to it. That's the issue.
Thank you, Ms. Presley.
You're welcome. Any questions?
Yeah. You, you gave them a lot of paperwork.
I did.
They, they got homework. Ms. Presley, if any commissioner had any questions, uh, after, uh, tonight's, uh, hearing, uh, do you have business card or anything?
I actually want to talk to Ms. Penn on CB, this is my conference information. And yes, I just want a voting system that is easy to prove fraud. That should be the criteria. It should be easy to prove if someone is trying to steal cover from law.
Well, thank you very much, ma'am. Now, before I move on, is there anybody else on the paper ballot initiatives who would like to make comments to Commissioner's Court? Yes, sir, Ms. Brown, please, of course.
I need a step so I can reach those on the, um, Judge, thank you for the opportunity to see, thank you everyone for being here. Um, I won't be here for just a second, I would like to make a comment that, uh, while, while these new voting machines, uh, appear to be potentially a step in the right direction, uh, these are not the voting machines that our counties, that B County had, that we used to vote in the presidential election. And I, we need to make sure that everyone understands that. Uh, this is what is maybe what I'm understanding being proposed that we go to, but this is not what we used. When I voted at the Coliseum, and I drove through, and I was handed, I believe it was an iPad or an electronic tablet at some point, I didn't, I didn't read the name. Um, that is what I voted on, and did not receive any, uh, and receipt is not the correct word, but I did not receive any paper verification or anything like that. I voted on that machine, and unless that machine stored my vote and everyone else that used it and was not linked to anything else, they kind of repeat a lot of iPads together, I'm using iPad, it's not iPad, whatever that app or apps was, together, and so, um, maybe showing my ignorance, I'm not sure how that happens electronically, but if those things happened, um, joining those things wirelessly together, uh, the comments have been made that these things are never linked together, never with the internet, never wire accessible for any of those things. Excuse my ignorance for my relatively simplistic understanding of that, but those are, those are my questions, and I just wanted to make sure that the court understands that this is not the machine that I voted on in this latest election. This is what maybe we're going to, and going back to a form of a paper ballot, but, um, the point was very quickly surpassed, and we went straight to this machine instead of discussing the machines that we used in B County to vote at the time.
Thank you, Ms. Brown, thank you for bringing up that, that point. Uh, is there anybody else who'd like to speak about the paper ballot initiative? Yes, ma'am. Would you like us to bring you a microphone? All right.
And I have four paper ballots. I've worked in the Texas office for 50 years, I've worked in elections every year. And I appreciate, young gentlemen, that says it's impossible to hack this machine, but I can tell you, if a gentleman or a person who can build a machine, anybody can hack it. And if you've ever had any of your accounts hacked, you will know what I'm talking about, because I've had my accounts hacked, and it's not easy to deal with. Now, we pay the ballots to oppose problems there through that, but there are ways to counterbalance this, and it's easy to deal with when people go together and, and watch each other's account of ballots, because I have worked that system many times. And I have four paper ballots, I think it's the best way to go, and I am far very much for that. And I have talked to a lot of people who are very much for paper ballots. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hammond. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak on that paper ballot initiative? Okay. Mrs. Gibbons. I'd like to give, I'd like to give you an opportunity to speak this time, even if it's just a lame bathroom. Even if it's just a lame bathroom, fully justified. And then after Mrs. Gibbons, if there's anybody else that'd like to speak, uh, counterpoint against paper ballots, uh, I'll give you this opportunity.
Okay, Ms. Gibbons, retired, 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 after the question for B County. And I, I had no idea what this was about, I walked in, five papers, and I read pretty much of everything, and I laughed for you again. This is from the Secretary of State's office. There is no evidence that it's voting on voter registration systems in Texas or compromised before the 2016 elections or in any subsequent elections. The Department of Homeland Security has offered a statement reiterating this fact as well. I serve the poll watcher, the election judge, the election clerk, early ballot board clerk, early ballot board judge. I have had to hand count ballots, and it's probably 10:11 or 12 o'clock at night, hand tally them. Do you have any tally sheets here with me tonight? Yes. Tallys are one, two, three, four, five, for every single name on the ballot. So, three and three people do this at the same time, and if somebody gets lost, you have to go back and start the vote. And these were done for small elections where very few people threw out, because it was cheaper to use a printed ballot that was generated on a copier than to use the ballot that the voting machine counted. This surely has used electronic counting for a very long period, maybe in 2006, from we started using electronic machines. But the counting has been done by machines, I was living off in 1991. Weeks before that, I know that we took ballots to the physical counting stations, and they were fed into a scanner or something, we were there to, then I grew up, we didn't have a gun until 7:00, 8:00 the next morning, because something was going on with the counter tools that those ballots that we fed into had physical counting stations. There was no tools, ballot went in at the polling place. Let's say it can happen when people count by hand. I wrote this about one afternoon. People who have the responsibility for conducting elections are dedicated and loyal to the vote. Their highest priority is that each voter's vote counts regardless of party affiliation. Good decisions have been made in the past. These are our elected officials, I believe we can trust our officials to do the right thing and not call people who are conducting elections currently in question. Much of what is done and required is beyond local control. Elections conduct is directed by the Texas election code in the Texas Constitution. And this is amended every time the legislature leaves, we would be able to watch that. There's no, there's nothing else that you get, either books telling how to do things, but the law is there. And one of the things that occurred to me, the legislature, the federal government has provided funds, the legislature couldn't provide funds, if a decision is made to go to paper ballots, and then we find out two years from now, or after 2000, 2026, if money's gone, and we decide, oh, wait, it's really not working, it's not as costing as 30, it's costing as 60, it's costing as $90,000 to do the annual counting of those huge long Then the county tax change will allow to check that bill. There probably won't be any money left, any money, the federal government is giving money from the state. So, you know, rather than later, before there was funds are home. So, we really are, with this new system, we no longer really be paperless, because there is a record that goes into the machine. I think we would explain when we first started, that there are two separate systems, and I think that point has, has not held. There is a system, just like we used to come in and we find in on a piece of paper, that's what this one does. This is the one that says how many people came to vote, and who they were during early voting, unless the law has changed. Candidates can, can know who at the end of the day has voted.
They're posted 11 o'clock next day.
Right, 11 o'clock next day. But, that was in fact how they voted. That has been that way of all, of all, we've had elections, information is computerized. It used to be that we kept that information here on our own computers, now I believe it goes to the state and comes back to us and back to us. That information is not how they voted. It is important, the information on how people voted does not be public until election day, when the polls are closed. I just think there's been a bit of misinformation and concern about something that isn't true. So, I appreciate the opportunity to speak. I am speaking on behalf of, although I used to paper ballots until the very last time I was in court, that I could, because I liked to have a paper, a food machine. I'm going to have a piece of paper again, food and cheese. And you can never, you go to vote on a white paper, you don't walk out of there with a copy of your ballot. You don't know what happens to a ballot after a ballot. So, I've heard questions from every side, and I think you need to trust the process and trust the people who do the work, who are appointed and elected and support them in what they did. And, um, I have, I do have one question about, oh, and we, we have this one over and over again, that this question is not connected to the internet in any way. The fourth vote, the Secretary of State's question, yes, from, from which system that does not have the votes in it, to the Secretary of State's office, yes, I think there are a difference, but it doesn't necessarily have to do with it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gibbons. Is there anybody else who'd like to address the court in support of the statutes quo? I, I don't, you. On, in support of the statutes quo? Is there anybody that would like to, uh, address the court in support of electronic voting machines? Oh, this is the end of the, of the discussion, it's never the end of the discussion when it comes to politics and government, uh, so, uh, it's a very difficult, uh, nuanced issue with many, many, uh, wonderful individuals, committed community members, citizens who are passionate about this. Uh, I'll get out the private cell phone numbers of all the commissioners that are seated here. Um.
Judge?
Yes, ma'am.
Do we have one more person?
Yes, ma'am. Hi. Come on up and, uh, go on over, and, uh, please, uh, identify yourself for the court.
Good evening, my name is Helen Williams, I'm the election administrator for San Francisco County. I have been, uh, I was appointed in 2005, and I have been working elections since 1988. I have seen paper ballots count, I have seen the old letter machine, I have seen the paper ballots that run through the machine, and I have seen the electronic, uh, equipment. And I've worked with every one of them. Before I was election administrator, I worked at the poll as an election judge, I worked for the Congress of San Francisco County when I ran the election for, uh, San Francisco County, and then when I was appointed, I too was in fear of what we came into with. Because in 2005, we had, uh, we had to meet HAVA's requirement, which meant we needed to be in compliance with the Help America Vote Act. That means that we have to have a code that people with disabilities can vote on. If they can't see how many vote on a paper ballot, they can't. And so, uh, HAVA, the Help America Vote Act, was put into place with the electronic voting was put into place with the electronic voting. Now, someone that cannot hear, but can see, they can touch their ballot. Someone that cannot see can listen to the ballot. And so, it's very important that people with disabilities can vote themselves. They don't want somebody else to vote for them. They want to vote themselves. And so, this opened the, this opened up that opportunity so that most people can vote on them. You worry about if your vote didn't count. We have steps that we have to take. Can we print a precinct report? Yes, we can. We can print out a report at the end of the night that says precinct 1, 18 voters voted at this, at this polling. Precinct 2, 2 voters. But it's not going to tell you who they voted for because then what happens is people working the election can pass that information out. So, it's reserved for the central town. And so, when the equipment is brought back and it's locked up because no one can get to it, but uh, we don't lock that. We pull out a D-Drive that goes into a server that is not connected to any internet. And I'm going to say, how many of you can hack into your coffee pot? No, you can't. Because there's nothing inside that piece of, of that coffee pot that will allow you to connect to something outside. Same thing with this equipment. Are we connected by radio chain? Yes, they talk to each other. But they don't talk to, they don't have anything installed in them that's going to feature a satellite or your phone or anything else. And so, election night, when we bring in this equipment and we put it into the central town and it's counted, the judges have left steps to take on that piece of equipment. And then we carry it off. We place it in the envelope with the D-Drive. It comes with central town. We put that D-Drive into the server to be vetted. We have this tape that tells us how many votes were passed there. We can compare it to make sure that they balance. And if they didn't balance, we definitely would have a problem. And we would be on the phone with the Secretary of State or, and Hart and your civic, because that's who we also have equipped through. And what we would do is say, we have a problem. And we would get that call and call before we could give out the results. Also, the Secretary of State requires us to have a manual hand count vote, tally after every single election. And so, what we do is we pull all the votes from the machine and we recount them to make sure that they match what our count station read when we put it into the scanner. And so, we have tested all this, more than once. And as an election administrator, we do, we take it all just like one of your commissioners or your judge, that we are going to uphold the law to our opponents. And so, we're going to do everything we can to make sure that we have a secure election for our counties. And I've known Laura, that she was appointed. And, you know, she came in not knowing a thing about elections. And she jumped right over that phone, called me and said, I need help. And I have worked with her. She has gone to the Secretary of State every conference we've had, every training we've had. And she has learned everything she can learn about elections. As a matter of fact, I can pick up the phone and call her now and ask her questions because I've been on every day. And election law contradicts itself. I know one of the questions was about election law states that we have to do this. Well, I read the election law book front and back. And we get to do election law every, every two years. We have a new election law that comes out. Because the legislation has so many new law changes that our laws change, our laws change every two years. So, we may have an election law here and an election law over here that contradicts themselves. Which one do you follow? You, as an election administrator, make the best choice for your county. And as an election administrator, we would never choose a piece of equipment or a voting, a way to vote that we still like fraud would happen in our county. Because we take our job very seriously. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Miss Hill. Is there any questions, Miss Hill, for the commissioners? Thank you, Miss Hill. Is there anybody else that would like to speak on that type of question? Okay, commissioners in front of you have some additional packets of information. We have received collated and copies of a resolution signed by constituents. You have those packets of papers in front of you. Some of these individuals vote tonight. Many of them, their names you'll recognize. We also have in front of us a package of information. A form of lifting of, well.
Can we not make, we can share, Judge?
I'll make a copy for you after the hearing if I don't have multiple copies here. I have all the copies here. This is a list of constituents who are in support of maintaining the status quo. As you'll concede, gentlemen, this is something that is, individuals are very passionate about one of those, of the debate. Before we move on, I'd like to take a moment. And I know many of the speakers today mentioned it. And again, I speak on behalf of commissioners. Court, you would like me to thank, I know this has been a difficult situation for our elections administrator, Ms. Warnock. She takes great pride, and for good call, she takes great pride in the effort that she undertakes on behalf of all of us every day. Ms. Warnock and her employees pay election and election security incredibly seriously. And it's important that she understands and that this record reflects that this judge and my, the seat for the commissioners, that we recognize and acknowledge that she does an excellent job. And it's so difficult for everybody out there, it's so difficult. Even doing the great jobs that paper ballot commissioners have done in maintaining neutrality and in arguing a policy ideal without evolving into personal attacks or opinions. It is very difficult when something such as Ms. Warnock is so close to this process not to take it personal. So, I want to acknowledge and thank Ms. Warnock for not only her day-to-day service, but for her composure today because this is something that, and I feel very, very, very fortunate that Ms. Warnock is in the position that she's in because this president very simply clarified for everybody in this room the various laws constitutional, well, there's no constitutional, but there's tons of laws in the elections code that change from year to year. It's a very difficult process. Miss Hill, very happy to meet you. Thank you for being here. I wouldn't want to do either of y'all's jobs. So, I'm very glad that y'all are standing in between the election process and the county judge's position here in Indy County. And I'm sure I speak for Judge Ritz as well down in Sandpack County. Along with mine, I know that we had an individual, one or more individuals that commented that they had reached out to Ms. Warnock and met with her. I think maybe not, maybe that was somebody who had, I've spoken with outside of this meeting. But I do want to, I do want to offer that and make sure that all of our constituents understand we are public servants. We are here to answer questions. It doesn't have to be in a formal meeting. If you have a question, Ms. Warnock's office currently is in the courthouse, which is easy to find, tall building in South, Old Lady on Bridge. It doesn't leave much of a town. But please, come by, ask questions, call, set up a time to meet with her. If you have concerns or questions, give her the opportunity to address them. She may not have a thought, your questions and, or your concerns. But give her the opportunity too. I would encourage you to do so. You know, a lack of communication oftentimes creates greater conflict than greater communication. So, the more that we communicate with each other, the more that we have an opportunity to share our beliefs, to share our feelings and our opinions, the better the law get along and hopefully the better results you'll have. Local government is constantly dependent upon public participation. And, you know, annually, our turnout for local elections is about 10%, right? 10% of your registered votes. There's about 15,000 and some chance registered votes in county fees. 10%. That's pretty bad. So, thank y'all. I know everybody here votes. I know everybody here is out in the process. I'd like to thank you all for your comments today for your, your care and consideration and making comments that you, that you made. And commissioners, if any of us, if you'd like to say, I open the floor for debate, discussion, anything that y'all want.
If I could, Judge.
Yes, sir.
This document we just received is entitled, Don't Undo. What, all we've done, I won't read the whole thing, but it says, no. To paper ballots, no, to moving back in time. A quick capulation, there's 101 signatures here. And it's my understanding there's several sheets still out. So, on the other side of the coin, we have at least 101 people saying, no to paper ballots.
Thank you, Commissioner. Are there any other commissioners that would like to make comments?
Moving forward, there isn't any paper ballots.
Yes. Yeah, ultimately, yes. The state legislature has passed this bill that commissioners with identified. 598. And I can tell you, I believe it's true within Bill 598, there's a provision that the, that this, the measures contained within this bill will become effective and enforceable upon the provision of federal funds or state funds to your various counties to be able to comply with these new measures. So, should the will of court be to move, to continue on with some form of electronic voting mechanisms, these machines, they are very expensive. Hart Center Civic is committed to decreasing the price that each county has to pay by at least 50% on any future purchases. You know, I appreciate Mr. Savant.
Thank you very much for that on the record.
But, ma'am.
Are these machines all registered, certified?
No, ma'am, no, ma'am, no, ma'am, no, ma'am. These are not, and that's a really good point. Mr. Savant, if I could have you go ahead and just, you can address from a seated position. You can stand up and lecture if you want. But we did have, and that was a really good point. We did have a lot of communication about the machines. And we were talking about these machines, but these aren't the machines that we voted on. With respect to the Hart Center Civic machines that we currently own and currently utilize, would the responses to any of the questions that I had made to you or any of the statements that you made with respect to security, the connectivity, what lack thereof, would any of those answers change?
No.
So, is it a fair statement to say that the, these machines, I'll call them the new machines, are no more secure than the current machines that we have?
Correct.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
The only thing I'd like to also put on the record, there are copies of this city bill 598 on the table. Please take a copy and read it. It also has the bill analysis explained in a lot more detail. Please.
Did someone mention the cost if we were to vote that way?
No, ma'am, we're not at that point. So, that's, that's not really, we're.
I'm sorry?
That's not really something that, I don't think that we're considering tonight. This isn't a proposal on entering into a new agreement with Hart Center Civic. Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am. And in all fairness, and I don't mean to jump out there in front of my fellow commissioners. We spent a little bit of time here tonight. Thank y'all. So dangerous to a politician microphone. But we have received a lot of information. We have a lot of paperwork that we can go through, that we should go through. And this is one of those issues, like I said before, that will probably justify additional discussion reflections, both individually and in a public forum in the future. But at this time, if there's any further debate or discussion that any commissioners would like to have, like, give that opportunity. Yes, sir, is that Mr. Nuss?
We are, if we see that it costs $5, $6 million in COVID, believe not that corrupt.
Yes, sir. American Recovery Plan Act, but.
Is there any way to possible that could be applied towards a voter verified paper ballot machine? That the state is talking about, is it an underdand?
Yes, sir. I don't think so, but I think, someone got to throw in the bus. Please, commissioners with the Hart, uh.
If you would, that bus has been running over me so many times. Be careful. What, what commissioner, Lenny and I learned, don't miss a commissioner's court meeting because they put you on a committee. And we are on that ARP committee to determine what we can and cannot purchase with that money. And what we can do, Judge, we can contact, we have hired a company to guide us so we don't do it incorrectly and have to pay it back. We will run that question by that company.
Sir, thank you, Commissioner.
Mr. Nuss, yes, sir. Well, firstly, a director for the electronic voting device is a toppled. That is absolutely clear. And it's the height of terrorist pride and hypocrisy to say that your system is getting gone. Because that's just not true. Because anything committed by me, I can't be on that budget was outside of the deal or senior software. Because you don't have that paper to go on, that's what the state affects the economy. Because even a voter verified paper ballot, the voter still has to verify that the tabulation machine correctly marked it. But that's still an improvement over the R-E-B, the Republican ballot. You can't, there's no way of stopping it. Because when you get right down to it, you have to enter software and then they raise the time off of it.
Thank you.
I have it for the, investigate what I want to do. While I do not believe that we attack, add, hot, or, or whatever, and I'm going to say that I do bring the third of the tech. But then I'm thinking, I mean, I should justify that. I can't just go from there.
Thank you, Mr. Nuss. Mr. Savant, the existing system that the county utilizes, is there a component that, without requiring a completely new system, is there an existing component to provide for a paper audit trail system that can attach on to the existing system that we have?
So, the, what the county do is it will look to move forward with paper audit trail system. It's not personal, entire new system.
I mentioned this earlier, it's a common platform where we would take the existing devices and convert them to be paper audit trail devices. Okay, yes, ma'am.
Judge, I don't think that's quite clear that there is supposed to be federal funding that's going to take that conversion.
Yes, ma'am. And we're pretty confident that it's coming through, right?
Yes.
That's a good question.
It's fantastic.
It's fantastic, that's a good one.
And if, if you do it before November of 2022, they will reimburse you 100%. If you wait till after November of 2022, it's only 20%.
So, it's a reimbursement?
It's a reimbursement.
Okay. What is the cost?
I don't have that figured out.
30 grand, 40 grand?
He, 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 I can tell you, San Patricio County is 522.
522. Thank you. Just one more minute, let's make things, thank you all. We'll all get to talk in the hallway in just a minute. Commissioners, at this moment in time, is there any, is there any further comment or debate? Is there anybody who would like to make any motions? Hearing none, we move on to agenda. Hearing done, we move on to agenda number three. Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
I have a motion, do I have a second? I have a motion and a second, ask any further discussion. Hearing done, all of the officials, if they can, I think, on. All right, I will blow the right passage to the House. Thank you all very much for being here tonight. Thank you.